All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start off this evening with a public hearing. So I want to call this into a session of public hearing at this point. We are here to give notice of the public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2025. This is our annual action plan for the City of Greer. We'll recognize the folks that are here from the Greenville County Community Development Authority, and we'll have them speak in just a moment. But let me give you a overview of how this works. The City of Greer participates in the Greenville County Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, who we have worked with for years, is preparing its annual action plan for the 2025 program year. An in-person public hearing will be held at the Greer City Hall located at 301 East Point Set Street on Tuesday, March the 25th, and the home programs will be discussed. Public comment and proposals will be invited by the city's strategy for the City of Greer, including objectives and projected uses of funds. The share in an estimated $326,577 is in the CDBG funds, and $111,760 in home funds should be available in July, and estimated $32,563 in the CDBG program income and zero in home program, and we'll talk about that in just a moment, I suspect. Income are expected to be available through the program year. Comments are also invited on past and present housing, community development performance, and needs. CDBG funds can be used to assist low and moderate income people, prevent or eliminate slums and blight, or to meet urgent community needs where no other funding is available. Home funds are used to increase the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for lower-income people. After tonight's session, if you would like to make written comment, they can also be sent to Joe Smith, the Executive Director of the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. We have with us this evening Joe Smith, the Executive Director, and thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Have a wonderful relationship with these folks and have for many years. And I want to introduce you to Jose Reynoso. Mr. Reynoso is now the Senior Community Development Planner for the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. He's going to bring us some information tonight, and I think we have a member of the board with us as well, too. We thank you for making time and effort to come out. Mr. Reynoso, the floor is yours. If you'll come to the podium, please, sir, and just state your name and who you're with, the floor is yours.
Hi, Problems. Good evening. My name is Jose Reynoso. I'm with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. I'm here today to present the fiscal year 2025 annual action plan for the City of Greer. And so what is the annual action plan? So the annual action plan is the application that we submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development every year as to what we plan to use the funds allocated to the City of Greer, those funds being the Community Development Block Grant, the home funds, and our emergency solutions funds. And we do this every year, so the program year always starts July 1st and ends on June 30th of the next year. And so this upcoming program year is actually going to be the first of the new five-year consolidated plan that we're also working on at this moment. And so one of the requirements for the CDBG funds is that it must meet one of the three national objectives, that being benefit low- to moderate-income individuals, prevention of slum and blight, and to address any urgent community needs. Home funds, of course, are used for the construction of affordable housing, whether that be as homeownership or rental for the benefit of low- to moderate-income individuals or families. We've used these funds, of course, in Greer for the Fairview Townhomes and then building the Ruddy Creek Neighborhood. And so here's the chart that will show you the prior two years allocations, as well as the proposed allocation for the next upcoming program year. Of course, you have your CDBG, then your CDBG program income, home, and then home program income. And program income is funds that are generated usually from a sale of a homeownership unit, any funds that we get from any of the rental units that all gets reallocated back into the city for the next program year. So here is the actual pie chart of all the fundings that you guys will receive, of course, as a breakdown of new construction, disposition, facade improvement program for businesses, infrastructure work, interest expense, your economic development, demolition, facilities improvement, and then any of your subrecipients, that'd be your nonprofits that we fund every year. And of your subrecipients, here's the kind of breakdown of the five nonprofits that we're going to fund. So we've got Creative Advancement, Greer Relief, your Greer Community Ministries, and then, of course, the city's parks and wrecks for their senior center and their youth programs that they fund. And of course, here's what each one of them does. The City of Greer is for the senior program. Of course, all goes to the equipment of the senior center. For their youth program, it's usually for the summer camp for the children, usually for equipment or any activities that they need to fund. Greer Relief, of course, one that we've worked with over many years, excellent subrecipient. They provide case management, utilities and rentals assistance. Creative Advancement is, of course, for an after-school program. And then the Greer Community Ministries is our local Mills on Wheels. And then Greer actually is one of the two actual municipalities that is in two different counties, the other one being, of course, Fountain Inn. But for you guys, you guys are in the Greenville County and in the Spartanburg County side. So whenever we talk about affordable housing as to meeting the income eligibility, because you guys are in two different counties, the chart here shows what those income brackets are, being it's broken down by 50%, 30%, and 80%. I don't know why they do it that way, but it makes logical sense to be 30, 50, and 80. But here is what that looks like. This chart is actually going to be updated in April. They do it on a yearly basis, so these are what the numbers are now, but in April they will change, and those actually won't come into effect until the new program year starts. And then this slide here shows the housing programs that we have. That's homeownership. We do, of course, rental units, whether we build them ourselves or partner with any developers. First-time home buyers program that we have in partnership with Community Works Carolinas. Of course, they do down payment assistance or assistance with closing costs. Our investor program, so if there's any landlords there that have any units that need to be brought up to code, there is a program where we do a small interest loan to bring those units up to code. Our rehab programs for homeowners, our in-house loans for homeownership, our rental assistance, whether that be if we're preventing someone from getting evicted through homeless prevention, or our rapid rehousing for those individuals or families that are already living on the street to get them rehoused. And then our new funding that we are going to send out to you, more information to you guys to send out to the public, is our disaster assistance program. So any homeowner that was affected by Hurricane Helene and housing damage, there is a program for that for rehabbing your home. And here are some of our community developments and economic activities that we do. Of course, we do infrastructure improvement, any kind of demolition to any dilapidated units, facilities improvement, whether that be your senior center, and then, of course, our funding of the nonprofits for businesses. We have our small business loan, and then our facade improvement program, which we've worked in the past. We actually do a lot in the downtown through Smith &amp; James and Chelsea's Apparel were the two most recent ones that we just completed to the front of the store. And then the next slide kind of shows you a timeline, so we usually begin this process in January. So any nonprofits or any developers will apply for us in January, go through the training at the end of January, submit the application, and mid-February we'll review it, score them, and then we make our recommendations to our board. And then, of course, we, once that's done, we kind of present it to every municipality, wait for their resolution to come through before we finally submit to HUD in May for their final approval, and then get our funding hopefully in July. So that is all I have. Any questions or comments that I can answer for you?
Sure, we'll open it up. Counsel?
Go back. There's a couple of slides where it... Oh, there it is. The median family income.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that that's where Greer is under the Spartanburg?
So you guys, depending on if the unit is in the Greenville County side, we'll use the Greenville County numbers, or if it's in the Spartanburg side. So you guys are one of the two unique municipalities that has two different counties that you guys lie under. So you guys fall under the Spartanburg and the Greenville County side as well.
Okay, so I understand. I understand that. Can you... And I know there's probably a formula, but we hear a lot about affordable housing. What is your definition of that? I mean...
So we typically go by the HUD's definition, which is any individual or family that falls under the 80% or below, like the chart here says. The chart only goes up to 80%. So any individual or family whose income falls anywhere within this range will be considered for any of our programs.
Okay, so if you had a family that was making, that lived in the city on Spartanburg County side, and if they were making along this chart, let's see, which, the 80%, that's the limits, right?
Yeah, that's the...
And persons in the family, I see that. So if they were making 79, four, with a family of eight?
Yes, that would be the absolute limit. Anything more than that would put you in the 81%, which is make you ineligible for any of our programs.
So then what happens? These folks need a place to live. They want... Does that qualify them for, what, a lawn or...
So most of our programs, of course, are, if they're under, of course, they qualify for any of our loans, our rental assistance, down payment assistance. Anything over, we do have some funds for anybody over the 80, who's between 81 and 100%. Those are very limited because our goal is, of course, to always help those that are under the 80%.
So this chart, they would be eligible for some of your, whether it's rental assistance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The program income that you had listed on, I think, I believe it was the chart before this one, you said it was like $238,000, the one right in the middle. You said, was there a unit sold inside?
So those typically, I believe these are tied to the Ruddy Creek units that we have that were sold, and of course, any profit that was made from that was reallocated here. Most of it right now is being used up for the construction of the Fairview homes that were just finished up. So that's why you typically won't see any home income for this upcoming year because everything was reallocated there. So until those units get sold, you won't see anything until next year, where you'll see that home program income increase.
And I think that's an important point that I mentioned earlier in the conversation is Greer is a bit unique, I think still is a bit unique, in the fact that we are one of the few cities in Greenville County that chooses to reinvest their money in these programs so that it is a rolling or revolving fund. And, you know, I think the ultimate compliment is that we do have, you know, show a zero in our home programming, not the money that we would receive, but that we are using that money and are using it wisely in terms of helping provide assistance to folks and housing for folks and that sort of thing, whereas some communities opt to use this as one-time money. We've been rolling this as long as I've been here, and I know even before that. So we've been able to do some things that other communities have not been able to do just simply based on a decision that was made early on to take our funds and keep that money working in our community, and I think that's been a wise decision over the years.
And so one of the other things is if you guys don't end up using a specific fund, like let's say your demo for this year, you actually carry that forward into the next year. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head for what's actually carrying forward from funds that you haven't used before, but there's also that, is you don't, just because we allocate it to you guys doesn't mean you have to use it that program year. You can carry it forward. If you have bigger projects that you're looking at in the next year or two or next five years, you can save those funds up, and then when you're actually at that point in time to use them, you've already racked up a couple of years' worth of specific funding for that.
And we've done that through several projects inside the city that were going to require more money than we were going to get in a single year, and I think that the ability to be able to do that has helped us in regards to some of the projects we've tackled. Others?
The neighborhood that was developed off of Bible Brook, what was the name of that one?
Ruddy Creek.
Ruddy Creek?
Ruddy.
Ruddy?
Yes, Ruddy.
Okay, Ruddy Creek.
Creekside, Creekside.
Creekside.
Ruddy Creek is a loop street that goes through there. The neighborhood name is Creekside. That's what's on the sign.
Creekside. And so that was, if I remember correctly, it was an affordable housing project or something that we subsidized.
Yes.
Now, the folks that bought those houses, are those, do they continue to be subsidized? Or they sold it, can they sell at market rate, or wasn't there a time limit?
Yes.
Like a three- to five-year period you had to hold it or...
So with those, we typically tried to do the, with HUD, they want us to attach an affordability period, depending on how many, how much home funds were put into the actual home. So they typically want to do, want to see a 10 to 15, I think for new construction it's 15 years. That's to prevent somebody from just buying the house, living in it for a year or two, and then flipping it for a profit. We want to kind of prevent that from happening. So the affordability period is 10 to 15 for any new construction that we do.
And if they sold it inside of that period, what would happen?
They would, of course, they would have to pay back. So if we did assistance of, let's say, $15,000 spread over the 15 years, if they sold it after the first year, we would recuperate, of course, the $14,000 of it. They'd have to pay back to us. And then, of course, we reinvest it back into the Greer.
Gotcha, thanks.
Speaking of Creekside, I know today Habitat for Humanity, one of the last four homes in Creekside was given to a family. When it comes to inventory, available lots, and this may be a joke question, are we at that point of considering, I mean, we've had, we've been fortunate with the townhome development with Creekside, some good parcels that have been keeping us busy for a few years. I mean, are we at that point where we need to potentially find more parcels?
We have an excellent relationship with the city, and when certain lots may come open to you guys, the way of course of business, for instance, in the Needmore community, there's a couple of lots over there that we have, a couple more that the city may have access to. Us will continue to put houses on, sell them, reinvest that money back into those. But we're always on the lookout for additional properties. Occasionally, we get a big Creekside-style development here. We can go into multiple Fairview Town, about 14 built. We have a phase two with 19. Everyone knows land is the lifeblood, being able to do any kind of a project. If you don't have the lots, you can't produce them. Always actively pursuing whatever piece of property we can get to work it out. The wonderful thing is we can take some underutilized or condemned pieces of property, clean those off, turn that into a homeownership or a townhomes. That was a side of old trucking terminal that was just abandoned. We can turn that into homeownership opportunities for 33. Yes, we're always seeking that because that's the lifeblood of the entire training. You've got to keep property in the element training in order to be able to produce them.
So we've got phase two of Fairview Townhomes, but other than that, we probably getting a little short.
Six other lots over here on the top of my head that we can build on. We're devising plans and things. An infield, single-family development lot is the best thing we ever come across because it has very little infrastructure cost. Basically, we're going to put in bricks and sticks, make a sewer connection, a water tap, and maybe you've got a home. That's the best thing, and that's what we do really well every development quarter. Bigger projects, Fairview, for instance, that's a million five in the dirt out there. It takes a long time to develop and get to that point where you can get those. Got to mix of both. We need to have the big development stuff so you can get a little bit of density and take some time to develop that and get that like you need it to fit in with the community. Have these individual lots that you can pull off and establish neighborhoods, build a product that fits in with those neighborhoods, the character of the neighborhood, and that's fairly quickly when you can find it. I'll have to tell you how hard it is to find dirt if you're competing with the open market. Dirt doesn't care what you put on it. At the end of the day, you put a million dollar house on it or a $500,000 house, or in our case, we're trying to put a $200,000 house out there where we can do it, and it's hard to compete with the market when your market's that open.
So recently on the news, I see more, Spartanburg is doing it, and I think Anderson announced that they, it might have been Anderson County, but announced that they're doing some more demolitions and condemnation of homes. Is there a benefit to that process? I mean, what's the catch 22? I'm sure there is one.
There is. We've worked with you guys over the years to develop slum and blight. If you have a code enforcement issue on a house and you have to condemn that house depending on what the chain of title looks like, sometimes the owner that property doesn't have the resources to do anything with it. We've actually demolished them, and then the property owner will sell it to us at a discount, deducting the amount of demolition, for instance. Or sometimes you may have a piece of property that, God, was so cloudy, you don't really know who in the chain of title has marked the title to it. You can do a demolition, place a lien on that property and foreclose it by publication of the foreclosure and acquire title that way. So we've got a lot of tools in the toolbox. We love for somebody just to come up and tell us, hey, I've got a piece of dirt here and I want to sell it to you, and we'll pay market price, we'll appraise it under our terms of the way we operate, based on federal dollars. We'll get it appraised, we'll pay the price wise, if we can work out a deal to put a piece, put a house on that property and go after it in that direction as well. But as part of your demolition dollars, we're in contact with your code enforcement folks here in town, and if they get a piece of property that is too far gone to rehab, we will, we can take you down and put a new house on that property.
That's good information, because I didn't realize, and if I'm hearing you correct, you don't necessarily always have to give away a property. If you can approach one, and there is an opportunity to buy it at market rate, okay.
Others? Mr. Reynoso, if you'll stay with us just a sec, we'll open this up. This is a public hearing. Notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer. By show of hand, is there anyone who would like to make comment or ask a question? Second calling, is there anyone here this evening in regards to the public hearing that would like to make a comment or ask a question? By show of hand. Third and final call, is there anyone here this evening by show of hand that would like to ask a question or make a comment in regards to the Notice of Public Hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan for the City of Greer? Seeing none, I'll call the public hearing to a close. Thank you, sir. And thank y'all for joining us this evening and the information that was provided. Counsel, let me call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened March 25th, 2025. Having conducted a public hearing and brought it to a close, I'd like to ask Councilman Riley Bettis to lead us in a pledge of allegiance and an invocation for counsel. If you'd like to join the council, please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we, first off, would like for you to keep your protective hands upon our public servants who are working so hard to fight the fires in the area. That's a thankless job that we hope you will oversee and bring them all back safely. We ask that you would continue to bestow your blessings on our city, be able to exercise our God-given freedoms of meeting as we do here. Please guide and direct us tonight. We would always act as you would have us act, to help others as we would want to be treated. Always remember that the glory for anything goes to you. Asking your continued blessings for our city, our state, and our country. It is in your Son Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Counsel, let's move then to the minutes of our last council meeting. That would have been held on March 11th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to departmental reports. You've got those contained in your packet this evening. Mr. Klein joins us for our financial activity report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Financial performance summary for February 2025. General fund, we had a cash balance of $30,440,000, had year-to-date revenue of $39,529,000, year-to-date expenditures of $30,401,000, and we are under budget by 5% year-to-date. We had a favorable revenue benchmark variance of $5,348,000, a favorable expenditure benchmark variance of $1,950,000, with an overall favorable benchmark variance of $7,298,000. Moving on to hospitality fund, we had a cash balance of $682,000, year-to-date revenues of $2,589,000, year-to-date expenditures of $2,905,000. Finally, stormwater fund, we had a cash balance of $3,348,000, year-to-date revenues of $2, 329,000, and year-to-date expenditures of $1,611,000. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Floor is open, Counsel.
On the hospitality dollars?
Yes, sir.
I don't think I heard you as far as the...
Collections?
Variance. I mean, is it, where are we, budgeted?
Sure, sure.
Budgeted revenue versus actual?
So for the month of February, we were just shy of 1% over, so about $2,000 over. And then year-to-date, we are 7.6% over what we're actually budgeted for actual.
If you look at the graph for the hospitality tax fund in this packet, it looks like it's way down for February. Why is that?
Yeah, looking historically over the last five years, February's been our lowest month every year. It just drops from January to February. I'm going to make the assumption that three days less than... I'm going to make the assumption that three days less in the month, less collections going on for those, for those three days. But we do historically see that decrease. But still considering, factoring in prior years of February, this is still, this was higher this year compared to last year February. We still continue to see that trend every, every month if you're looking at that prior year.
I'm looking at the graph in our packet on page eight. And it says that the, says the current fiscal year-to-date balance is 1.8 million off of where it was last year.
And I'm sorry, I was referencing hospitality collections, but you said on page eight?
Yeah, this is the hospitality tax fund.
For revenues? Sorry?
I'm not sure. It's not, it doesn't specific, the next graph says revenue. This just says the hospitality tax fund and it just said it's, I mean, it may be that we had a significant expense or something that came out of it.
And you were looking at budget percent, percent remaining?
It just says that it's 1.878169 million down from last year, which was 2.2 million. This year, it says current fiscal year-to-date was 682.
Is the cash balance titled?
Sorry. Okay, I see. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So cash balance, so what we do for, for hospitality fund, we actually do budget cash transfer for revenue back into the general fund each year. This year, we did it a little sooner. Typically, we do it in April. This year, we actually received, we hit that dollar amount that we needed to earlier, so we were able to make that transfer a little sooner.
And I see the blip.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see which one you were referring to.
I'm with you now. I see what you mean now. We just did it earlier
Yes, sir.
this year versus last year. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
Before we move forward, I want to give a quick update. I know that Councilman Arrowood has been gracious enough to remind us in terms of EMS services and other services, in some cases provided by the county, about EMS services and, and times. Mr. Mayorman and I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Cannell at County Square not long ago to discuss this matter and some others and got a, a report from them in regards to some of the issues that they face. And in, in, in both transporting and, and times, response times and various different things. And they, they did offer that they understood that when it is a loved one or anyone, and for that matter, that time is imperative. And they try to, to expedite that as, as best as they can. I think there was a question at one point in time about communication, about being able to take patients to different places, and that is part of what they do. So it may be that, you know, if one emergency room is stacked, as they say, that they may go actually to a different hospital. They also, and I guess I wasn't aware of this, offer a first choice to everybody that can indicate what they want to do. And so that, that may mean not going to the closest or the nearest facility as well. So certainly, some of the times that we've been seeing in the reports are calls for concern and they're aware of that. Fortunately for us, that only amounted for this year to be about 5% of the total calls. So while 5% is too high, if you're waiting 45 minutes for an EMS service and that includes handoff time or, or response time, then they're working to address those issues and wanted us to know that, that, that they understand that and are working to improve that on a regular basis. So we, we, I shared that information with you and we will, we will continue to keep an eye on it. But I also know that certainly they are aware that that's a concern for us at this point. Mayor, I appreciate you kind of picking up the ball and running with it. And I appreciate that the county is working on it. They, they have a lot to overcome. And I would like to ask the administrator if he feels like it's, if to maybe have the fire chief kind of have a brainstorming session about ways we, we can not only improve these times, but there, there is the cost that's associated with all of the us subsidizing the county. And if there's a way that we can start somehow collect those funds, I mean, just throw out anything and, and just see what we might can come up with.
It, that can be a future conversation then.
Have they indicated what is a realistic response time or an objective number that they actually shoot for?
We, we didn't probe it in that regard. You know, obviously, they're covering 800 square miles in, in Greenville County. They, they did win EMS service of, of the year for South Carolina. They, they overall, their, their, their time of response and the responses is, is well within that sort of 20-minute window, about 75% of them. Closer to, to 80 are all in that range. There are just that, those outliers of 30 to 45 minutes. Unfortunately, as, as I said, I think over, over that 20-minute limit, I think there was only about nine or 10%, so, or 14%, I believe is what the number was. So again, there, there are a lot of factors that, that go into that. One of the things that I did not realize is that if you are transported to a hospital of your choice or wherever they, they can get you, that if the emergency room is full, then they stack vehicles and others there and take them in as, as they, as they have an opening. And that, in some cases, has had anywhere from two to five EMS vehicles sitting for, in some cases, as long as two hours. So it, it's in some regards out of their hands in some cases because they, they've got, you know, units tied up. And the same thing happens for us, which is I think what you've mentioned on occasion. One, one of the things that's, and that can be out of the control EMS where they're stacking. But I guess to add insult to injury is that if, if we get a call that we're, maybe they're down to their last truck and they send, they call it BLS, basic life support, well, this patient needs ALS. Our guys provide that. We can't hand it off to that, those personnel in that truck. So our personnel has to go to the hospital. So our personnel that rode to the hospital, if that ambulance is stuck two hours, they're stuck two hours as well. So it takes us down. The, the, the issue is not, it's not unique to Greenville County or Spartanburg County. It's, it's nationwide. EMS services have defaulted to the fire service and the fire service has taken it for whatever reason. They just, they, I guess because one of the reasons they've taken it is the number of fires overall is way down from coast to coast. And some fire chiefs like to justify their, their folks on payroll. But it, it's still, it's, it's, it's an issue that I think that we do have to look at because it's costing our taxpayers not only, in some cases, a, a service that's not where it should be, but it costs our taxpayers dollars that we, we are subsidizing the county, so.
And, and that 5%, the 45-minute call window, is that specific just to city residents or is that countywide?
Well, no, the That's just in our report. Yeah, that's, that's, I'm picking these figures off our monthly reports.
Well, when the time you're talking about, is that the time from the time they call 911 and the guy leaves and gets to the house or the property that has placed the stress call? Is that the time you're talking about? Are you talking about from the time they pick them up, take them to the hospital?
That's the time from
Okay, well, you know, when the mayor was covering the time, if they go to one hospital, you know, then they got, and it's crowded, they can't stay, they have to go to another. So I don't know if it was all taking in that time.
No, it's just
Actually, the time from dispatch to resub residence, I guess.
That's right.
Yeah.
They're working a large area and I think, I think we've got to remember as well, too, while to Mr. Arrowood's point, we, we subsidize some of that activity. We also subsidize other activities that bring a higher quality of life to our community. And in this case, I, I think our, our response to those folks that live in the city is, is, is certainly a factor, I think, in, in the quality of life that we have. You know, just having seen the response that, you know, that my son had when he fell and, and the, the fact that, you know, that they had him down to Spartanburg Regional and Spartanburg Regional had impact and on his way to Spartanburg Regional before, you know, reading, I could even drive down there. Speaks to the fact that, you know, there, there are opportunities for, for us to, to see that, you know, that we are in, in some regard, getting our money's worth. Yeah, I, I agree that we, e- even though we're subsidizing the county, our residents get a higher level of service than a lot of other folks in Greenville, Spartanburg County. Because I, we have paramedics on every truck. It's, you know, we go over, I think we, we really go beyond. And, you know, we're able to administer drugs and things like that. And, and that's, that's kind of a big expense for us, too, because we don't, we can't get reimbursed financially from a county. There's, there's something technical. I talked to the fire chief about it, or how we're regulated by the DEA, I guess. But anyway.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayorman, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Just wanted to let y'all know that the, the food truck rollout, which we've done for years, has been rebranded to Greer Alive. And it will be Friday, March 28th, from 5 till 8 here in the city park. I want to notify y'all of a road closure starting Monday, the 24th. So yesterday, Moore Street between South Line and Trade will be temporarily closed as construction activities ramp up over there on the former Victor Gem site. Finally, the Greer Golf Grand reopening event will be Saturday, April 5th, from 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM. The event is free to attend. It will feature live music, food and drinks, raffles, games and giveaways. There's also going to be some golf pros that will be available to give tips for both kids and adults with Greer Idol auditions starting at 6:00. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Reportments to boards and commissions. We have a opening on the Board of Zoning Appeals, District 3. Adam Toma has resigned effective 12/31/2024. His term will expire, has, that he now has resigned. Mr. Hopper, would you like to bring a nomination this evening?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, I'm very happy to be able to bring Mr. Nick Juva to you for consideration tonight. Serve on the BZA. First met Mr. Juva about two years ago. He and his family live in the Chestnut Grove subdivision there south of 85. Gotten to know him over the past couple of years. He loves our community, active in leadership in his neighborhood. And I find him to be a very thoughtful gentleman. And so I think he'll do a great job for us. It's important to me that we have good representation from south of 85. Adam Toma resigned from the BZA to move to the Planning Commission. He lives in the Redcroft subdivision there, south of 85, south of 85. So I'm also very happy that Mr. Juva will fall into that category as well, giving us good representation and voices from south of 85 as we continue to grow the way that we have been in that area as well. You see his, his background as well. Disabled combat veteran, works with Michelin, active in a couple of other organizations here in our community as well. So great gentleman. I think he'll do a great job for us. Happy to recommend him to serve.
Comes as rec, comes as a motion here, second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, let's move to old business at this point. First item of old business is the second and final reading of ordinance number 50-2024. This is a ordinance amending Article 8 Solicitors and Canvassers of Chapter 18 Businesses of the Greer City Code of Ordinances. Mr. Klein joins us for that conversation, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So just an update from, from the first reading in December. So in Section 18311, definitions, after Solicitors, Canvassers and Peddlers, we actually added here and after as Solicitor or Solicitor, so that way we weren't constantly, you know, repeating Solicitors, Canvassers, Peddlers. Try to clean up that language a little bit. So throughout the rest of this update, when you see Peddlers being struck and Solicitors being added, that's, that's why, that was the, that was the most frequent change that we had throughout this. In 18-312 Permanent Fees, we, we did have an error. So as you see subsection B, it's struck entirely. That was an error, so we apologize for that. The only thing that should have been struck in that piece would have been Peddler. So we're not looking to remove that piece entirely. We're just looking to remove the word Peddler. So wanted to provide with you all an update on that. And then moving down to 18-315 Exemptions, this was another major change. We added more verbiage for nonprofit. So subsection B, we added nonprofit and we struck charitable, educational, religious. Also subsection B, we struck are exempt from obtaining a peddler's permit. And we added shall obtain proper application, be granted a single solicitor's permit and solicitor's ID card for each participant at no cost. And then finally, we added subsection C, youth and student-based organizations are exempt from background checks and a permit fee as required herein. And I do apologize, I missed one. Up in definitions, we did add a definition for Solicitors, Canvassers and Peddlers ID card, as well as we added two definitions for both permit and permit fee. And with that, that includes all the updates. And be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I will entertain a motion to receive second and final reading of ordinance number 50-2024.
So move.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Only have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is Ms. Towner approved of this?
Yes, sir, she does.
Okay. Her and her staff does a great job on this, so I'll, I'll take that. Others?
And it looks like we, we don't like the word Peddlers as much. There's a lot of striking on Peddlers.
Yeah, we had that included quite, quite often, as you can see, yeah. Try to, again, make it a little cleaner throughout the document.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's move to the second item. Second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 9-2025. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Sidney Ross Skinner and Allison Skinner, located at 105 Ballentine Avenue from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Mr. Bowles joins us at this point. Mr. Bowles, you want to give us an overview of any new or additional information at second reading? reading?
Yes, sir, thank you. We actually do not have any updates on this request at this time.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Third item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 10-2025, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by 301 Arlington Road LLC, located at 301 Arlington Road, from commercial general to the additional neighborhood. Mr. Bowles, any new or additional information in this regard?
Yes, sir.
For the purpose of discussion, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
This is the one they were looking to do, the townhome project, maybe like eight, nine units, does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, last item of old business before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 11-2025. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by James Randy and Kimberly Renee Kemp, located at 333 Jen House Road, by 100% petition, and to establish the zoning classification of suburban neighborhood for said property. Any newer additional information, Mr. Bowles?
The only update I have is that the Planning Commission had a public hearing for this request last week and unanimously, unanimously recommended approval.
Comes with approval from the Planning Commission, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
This is not, property is going to be developed, they just are looking to come into the city, correct? The house, there's already a house on the?
Yes, sir, I believe the intent is just to connect to sewer. There's no plans for development at this point.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Council, let's move to new business. First item before us this evening is a bid summary. It's a culvert damage remediation. City of Greer Engineering Department has listed sealed bids from qualified offers for culvert damage remediation in response to damage sustained from Hurricane Helene. Ms. Kar Camo joins us for this, for this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As the mayor mentioned, we did a request for bids. We had four interested companies attend a mandatory bidding, mandatory meeting. Out of that, three of the companies submitted bids. Our engineering department reviewed and recommends award to pipeline and damage consultants. This, as I men- mentioned in the memo, is also up for review by FEMA, so the project, we're looking to get reimbursement from that. And I'll open up for any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
There is a big gap on these bids.
Yeah, that's, that was my first question. You go from, what, a hundred thousand to half a million?
123, 216 and 562. I mean, that is.
Yeah, I can open it up to our Nathan Jackson, who is our Assistant City Engineer, who did the review of the projects, if you had more questions on those.
Sounds like the floor is yours, sir.
Hello.
Any, any explanation on a $400,000 gap?
Well, PDC is very experienced in this process. They actually came highly recommended from Spartanburg County. Actually got to see one of their installs over there with Spartanburg County, some of the reps over there. And I talked with the manufacturer, ISCO. PDC actually came highly recommended from the manufacturer as well, who's the sole source provider of the system. And so we knew they had a lot of experience going into it. The other bidders that arrived for the mandatory meeting, I'm not sure how much experience they have, but it didn't seem to the level of PDC, and so I think PDC's kind of worked out some of the kinks, some of the other contractors haven't yet, at least, so.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Was there anything different about this remediation than, than what it sounds like?
Well, we're sliding a liner into the existing culvert, and then they're going to use cellular grout to grout the void space in between the existing metal pipe that's deteriorating with a new liner. And so it's a unique process there that we want to make sure they don't have any voids in that space when they're all said and done, and PDC knows how to do that.
Thank you, sir.
I feel like this area, we've had different things come up here through the years. I mean, wasn't there an issue, and I don't know if this same line is tied to the sink hole and everything that happened in the Pizza Hut parking lot and?
That's just west of, the area you're talking about is just west of where this new culvert is. And I believe it, it was a different drainage area that was impacted by that other culvert you're talking about.
Is this the one, this, I, I'm assuming when you say the culvert, you're talking about the whole system, the inlet and then the stormwater piping and all of that? Is that the one that's so large that it goes under Wade Hampton?
No, this one is directly underneath, there's a VCA animal hospital.
Yep.
This culvert is directly underneath their only drive, so it doesn't go under Wade Hampton or?
Well, it's running parallel with, but it's not tied in, because that other one is, that other pipe is close by there, correct?
Correct, yes.
You're saying this, the culvert we're replacing is what, is the driveway to their business?
Yes, it's on Greer property, though. Greer owns the property north of Wade Hampton.
And that's where the water is discharging, it's going underneath their driveway onto this property?
Yes.
And we're just, and this quote is just to fix that pipe that's underneath their driveway?
Yes, it's a, it's a 54 to 60 inch diameter pipe, so it's a good sized pipe.
So that's just something about the same size that crosses Wade Hampton there, isn't it, I believe?
I think it's like Frohawk Creek is the name of the creek that goes through the culvert.
Well, if it's Fro, then it must be really deep as well, right?
Where the drive is, I think it's like 15 feet down to the creek. So that was one of the benefits of lining it versus removing and replacing, it would have been very expensive to dig down and replace it.
Thank you. Others?
What's the likelihood of getting reimbursed from FEMA? I was asking Andy, I don't know what you guys said.
I think at this point, it's highly likely that we will be reimbursed.
Yes, we've been working closely with Rosalyn to make sure we're following all the standard procedures, and she's been working closely with the state.
So I can hold my breath. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, both.
First and final reading of Resolution 5-2025, this is a resolution of the City of Greer, South Carolina, adopting policies regarding website, copyright and social media terms of use. Michelle Willis joins us for that conversation, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Council. We're bringing this before you as we're putting on the final touches for the new city website. And when we launch, we would like to have a published policy that's transparent and clear, that sort of set up the rules of engagement online. Thus far, we have been operating a website and social media accounts without any sort of published guardrails. And so what we're asking with this policy is that we have something that we can post publicly that clearly delineates sort of the boundary lines of communicating back and forth via those platforms.
For the purpose of discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
You say we didn't have a policy before?
Correct, yes.
Well, in the past, I thought we had some.
We have personnel policies, Mr. Airwood, that pertain to this, but we don't have any exterior-facing policies that regulate how our social media platforms interact with the public, nor websites, et cetera. So this, this clean, this actually establishes a policy that addresses that.
It also just kind of speaks to, especially the data piece, how we use people's information.
Correct, it's sort of an all-encompassing policy. It's pretty typical of municipalities to sort of put all of these things together, and the timing is great for us. As we're finishing up this website, it would be the most transparent way to proceed if we had this policy posted the day that the website goes live. So that's the intention for bringing it now.
When will the website, when will we change over? And, and what's the purpose? What, what good does that do us to go from a .org to a .gov?
Well, I would have to let our IT director speak to all of the, the issues with the .gov, but they've worked very, very hard to get the .gov designation for the URL. That requires a lot of extra security measures that frankly, as a communications person, I'm not, I don't really understand. But as we switch, so there are a few things happening at the same time, we're redesigning the website and also IT has earned that designation, so we're hoping that we're flipping all these switches at once so that we're not having to do it multiple times.
Well, just as a note, the website now still lists me as Mayor Pro Tim. That's not my job.
Well, part of that website relaunch is a thorough audit of all the information that's on there. So when you see the new website launch, which we anticipate forthcoming quickly, issues like that will be rectified.
Yes. We hope any, any errors that you might see on the current website will not exist. Obviously, we're all human, so if you do see any errors, please communicate those. We're happy to make changes anytime.
Are we going to be reviewing tags? I see that we have a, you know, something specific about tagging, and it's kind of, and who is, are you the moderator?
So what the intention is, is to create an internal policy. There are, we have lots of different social media accounts. We have the primary City of Greer account, the police department, the fire department, Parks and Rec, they also have social media accounts. So the idea here is that we will have a clear policy that, so there's no wishy-washy subjective decisions being made across the board. The policy, if you pass it tonight, will allow us across all these platforms to look at something objectively and to say, is that within the boundaries of, of what's fair and acceptable, or is it not? It will also create a foiable record of anything that's been altered in any way. So at any point, anyone, any of you or any member of the public can take a look at what has been altered and why.
And the copyright piece, you know, to your, I think it says something in here about we, we own the rights to it, and if you reproduce it, you have to give us credit for it, or, you know, use the city's logo and then, but what happens if it's inappropriately used? What is our plan there?
That's a great question. I think it gives us some recourse. Right now, we have absolutely no stated policy on that, and we are producing a lot of content. In addition to our logo, we produce photography, we produce videos, we produce written copy, and if we have no stated policy, it makes it fuzzy. And so we're trying to eliminate all the fuzzy that currently exists in this world without policies in place. So I think the city attorney has written this policy, and so this will give him the vehicle to act if necessary.
Thank you for your hard work on this, we appreciate it.
Yes, I appreciate your considerations. I think this will be a great step forward if we can enact it.
I will have to assume that, you know, this is a really good start, but this is probably a, a work in motion, is it not?
Yeah, I mean, you, the social media landscape changes so quickly, and all these rules kind of be the Wild Wild West out there. And so this is our attempt at sort of setting up the boundaries. It's like, I'm a sports fan, so if you're an athlete or sports fan, playing a football game and you don't know what the guardrails are, you don't know where the, the boundaries are for out of bounds, and you can just take the ball and run with it anywhere. So this will be a constantly evolving policy, and the way it's written will allow us to alter it as necessary as we evolve our communication tools.
Thank you. Others?
Ms. Willis, how do we intend to display our guidelines on social media and communicate that to folks who may be visiting the pages?
Great question. So the intention is to have the full policy posted on our website when we launch, if you choose to pass it. Each of our social media profiles, there's an About section, so it has a brief description about the City of Greer and the intention for the accounts. All of those poli, all of those profiles will have links directly to the policy. So anyone at any point, if they're choosing to engage in this, on these platforms, will know this is, this is what the, the terms of use is, and by participating in these ways, you're agreeing to those terms of use.
I want to echo, I appreciate you tackling this effort, for sure. I think it's important where we are to be thoughtful about the website, but also social media. I know you and I have had discussions, social media, certainly a two-edged sword as far as being accessible and sharing information, et cetera, and things can go off the rails for a variety of reasons, but I think having some guidelines, like you say, some guardrails, helps us keep it as positive a tool as possible. I'm, I'm comfortable with this, but just to let you maybe speak to this, obviously, you know, freedom of speech issue is very important in this context as well, and I'm sure that's been something that's been, you know, at the forefront as we've been compiling this that way. Can you speak to that process and kind of how we're viewing that?
Sure, I'd love to. I'm a huge advocate of the First Amendment, my entire career has been based upon that. I would say that enacting this policy is actually probably more conducive to support of the First Amendment. It does not prevent anyone from saying anything they want online on their own platforms at any point. If you would like to post on your personal Facebook page, any derogatory or whatever comments about the City of Greer or anyone else, you're, you're free to do so. What this policy does is it says things such as, we're not going to permit hate speech in, in the comments of our social media. Right now, we don't have that publicly stated anywhere. So if we were to want to pull down a comment that is hate speech, we would have a hard time justifying that without a policy. So what this would do is say, this is what's permitted, what isn't. You can say whatever you want on your own pages, but on our page, we are going to have a civil format where we can communicate important information on the businesses of the City of Greer. And in order to do that, we need to set up some rules. Right now, it's kind of the Wild Wild West, honestly, and that's dangerous. It allows people to spread misinformation, and they can spread misinformation on their own platforms, but when it is underneath the umbrella of the City of Greer, it can almost look like we're endorsing their speech or their misinformation. And so this policy will allow us to transparently select And so this policy will allow us to transparently selectively... And this would not be used frequently. This would be a very infrequent tool that we would use. But when we do use it, we will be able to, across the board, be fair and consistent with all of our content and provide that transparent record of anything that we've done.
And just to highlight my understanding of the plan, if content is deemed to be out-of-bounds, it's removed, we're keeping record of that?
Correct.
As a freedom of information, accessible?
Correct. So I hope that you're going to pass this tonight, so I've already been working on what our process will be. I've set up a system where I will end up training people who run any of our social media accounts on what to do if you are looking at a piece of content that you think is objectionable based upon our policy. So they will follow that procedure, which right now involves a form, basically, that they would fill out. They would have to screen capture the questionable content so that there is a photo record of what it is, and then all of the details. And it will have to correspond directly to a clause in this policy that we're asking you to pass. So there's no question, you're not going to be subjective about any of those decisions. It will be an objective choice based upon some clause in that policy, and then this will populate into a running spreadsheet. So if at any point anyone wants to look at comments that have been hidden or deleted or people, something that's been blocked, for example, then there will be a running record of that.
You said it's going to be objective instead of subjective, but go back a few minutes ago, and you said, "We are not going to allow hate speech." So that's really subjective. So how do you define that?
Okay, well, that's an excellent question, and I think that we would have to probably consult.
It's like pornography.
I didn't want to give that example, but that's actually what I was thinking.
Mr. Arrowood, that is a very valid question, and I will answer that question with this, that this is not going to be done in a vacuum, that we have to have a policy because right now, there is nothing guiding any decision to remove any offensive anything or anything that's off-topic. So in consultation with the policy and through the policy's interpretation by legal counsel, we will then make those determinations. We will, I would argue, probably be right 99% of the time, but we may miss one. We may erroneously interpret something that might be offensive or hateful or whatever that may not be. But right now, we have nothing guiding that. But this is not done in a vacuum. It'll be done through staff, the policy, and legal counsel's guidance.
And I understand your explanation, but if we want to take material off whatever we have, whether... And it's... Why do you have to have a policy? It's the city's. Whoever's looking at it, they don't like it, why don't we take it down? Because if you have a policy, then you are in between the guardrails. And so it does define what you can and can't take down. So why do you even need the policy? Because there's going to be certain things in there that you can't define. And if you take example, hate speech, and a lot of people, they'll say a few things that easily could be defined as hateful, whatever, however you want to say it. But in the discussion of ideas, I mean, we have heated debates, and sometimes we'll say things that maybe that we don't consider hate speech, but somebody else might. So does it even...
I think we'll take... We're certainly going to take a conservative approach to how we look at this under the guise of the First Amendment. But a social media post about Moore Street being closed between Point Set and Trade Street, and someone taking that opportunity to comment about, make a racist comment or some negative off-topic comment, has no bearing on the fact that Moore Street between Trade and Point Set will be closed. It's under that framework where we see potential problems happening. The free marketplace of ideas exists under Facebook's world or Twitter or whatever. As far as the city goes, just trying to provide information on topics germane to people's day-to-day living in the city, that's where we have to have a policy that governs that, that protects the people that are reading it, but also protects the information that's going out and ensures that it's pure information that's going out. Again, we have to have a policy because right now, it is wide open to interpretation. We have no legal precedent by which we can remove any information. And the recommendation comes from Municipal Association that it's, for lack of a better term, proper jurisprudence to just govern all of our government activities on social media with a policy. As airtight as a policy can be, which we all know are not great, but in this particular case, no policy is verboten. Having a policy is the way we need to go.
So if... And this is what I don't understand. I guess I'm just... I'm turning 60 in a couple of weeks, so I'm just old and decrepit, right? But if we're using our social media to put out statements from our city that are factual, Moore Street's going to be closed. Or the city council voted to fund the inlet project. So why do we even have to allow people to make comment on that?
Yeah.
I think that's a very valid point. I do.
Then you don't have to deal with this mess.
To me, it kind of sounds like you're going to a Facebook page.
Well, that's what it is. We are on Facebook. So when we post something on Facebook through social media, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we don't have anything governing.
Are you talking about the Greer City website?
So it's kind of a circular thing that we're talking about here, right? Because whenever we post on social media, we push people in general to our website. Our website sometimes pushes people to the social media. And so what we're trying to do is provide consistency among all of the different ways, the different tools that we use to communicate with people. You know, good communication philosophy is to find people where they are. So if members of our community are on Facebook, then that can be a tool that we utilize to communicate with people. This policy is not going to change how we communicate with our public for the most part. It's going to be the rare occasion when we're trying to communicate information to the public and someone has their own personal agendas, and they utilize our platforms to push those.
Ms. Arrowood, to you.
Like Jay said, I mean, you know, if the street's closed, why do we need their comment?
It's my opinion, part of the purpose of social media is there is give and take. As you know, Ms. Willis, I maintain my own public-facing council page for that purpose. And I don't have... Quite frankly, folks have interacted and shared negative feedback with me. That's, frankly, that's important to me, and that's my personal best, and I city-run page, et cetera, that way. In my opinion, as I'm reading what we have here, we're not saying people can't even share negative feedback or share, you know, contrary, you know, opinion to something that we share, whatever, share feedback in general. We're just asking them to do it in a certain way.
Correct.
As we would say is appropriate in a society that we want to live in, right? So negative speech is not the same as hate speech, for sure. You know, if we start with ad hominem-type comments and content, that's where potentially hate speech is a thing. So, yeah, in my opinion, I don't think that we should... I think it's important to let the public give us feedback on these different channels in whatever form. Just, I think it's good that we're having some rules on how to do that.
Yeah, and it's discouraging to some people who, you know, prefer civil conversation to go somewhere and get embroiled in some battle they didn't sign up for, right? They just want to know about a closed street. So putting some guidelines in place will help with that, I think.
There's too much anonymity behind the computer screen. I just don't think that... I don't know why we have to let people give... Because opinions are factual, and it seems like what we're trying to do is communicate fact, right? We're not trying to communicate opinion. We're trying to communicate fact. And so then, so why does... I don't know. I don't understand the whole...
What I would say, Mr. Arrowood, is that is our opinion to respectfully and professionally, when someone does give an opinion that runs contrary to what is truthful, black and white fact, that is our opportunity to, rather than... We're not going to do that on their personal page. We're not going to do that in any other community group that way. That wouldn't be the professional, appropriate thing to do. But if they do it on our platform, it's very appropriate for us to speak to that. And I've seen us do that in some instances as well, when people just flat-out state something that is not true.
But why even give them the opportunity to state something that's not true? That's the whole thing.
Because we have the opportunity to... Otherwise, we don't have the opportunity to address that misinformation and that incorrect information.
Well, we wouldn't just be closing the street because we want to, right?
Yeah, the closing of the street is just an example. But the point is, is to make sure that the folks stay on topic appropriately, that they aren't saying anything incendiary, that they are not spreading some misinformation that can't be immediately responded to by the city. And we're not chasing, you know, there's an authoritative place to come by which information can be gathered, fact-checked, and responded to by the city. So, but again, this is about... There's some philosophical questions that are being asked here, and I think they're all valid. The fact of the matter is, is we don't have a policy governing any of this. And so this is where we're starting. And the mayor is absolutely right. This is going to be a fluid policy over time. Who would have thought that TikTok was TikTok years ago or whatever? So we're going to have to adapt and change over time, but we got to start with some guiding document, and this is what we've presented to y'all today.
I just want to thank staff and everyone, because I think when we started on this road, it was like over 20 accounts some way and some form associated with the City of Greer, whether they were or weren't. Now we're down to a handful. So that's a immense amount of progress in, what, two years maybe, I think, it's been going on? I definitely, you know, kind of going back to what Jay and all them are saying, Facebook is probably millennial-age generation of technology, of social media. I think people that are in high school now are using Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, some of the other avenues. So we're probably behind the eight ball with this policy, with what's trending and how people are getting their information for news. So, I mean, we got to start somewhere, so we'll see how it goes.
And I think some municipalities across the country that don't have these policies in place have gotten in some legal trouble for taking action without a published policy. And so I think it opens us up to some vulnerabilities if we aren't transparent about what the conditions are.
Final thoughts?
I'll just say, you know, even on the report this month, I mean, it says we have over 11,000 followers right now. And I think the reason social media has won out in the news feed is because people can get on there, they can interact, they can go back and forth and get clarity. You know, somebody puts something out, and it's like, "Hey, I don't understand why this street's closed right now." Oh, well, let me tell you, it's XYZ, and then I heard this, and I heard that. And then, you know, the story can kind of come together, and then to your point, you can fact-check and clean it up and say, no, this answers the questions that you've brought up, and those are some good questions. And it's kind of like we're talking through this tonight. And to the mayor's point, and I think Andy touched on this too, is that this is going to be fluid and something that we'll have to adjust and adopt going forward. And then AI is going to complicate it even more, you know, to the nth degree. I've heard something today about a prominent podcaster, I believe he's got the number-two podcasts, it's out right now, and he said there's a company in the US that is mimicking his name, image, and likeness and creating content that makes it seem like it's him that's doing it. And I think eventually, we'll have to adopt policies to protect public officials, people, staff members from deep fakes that are going to exist, that are going to try to mimic and put out news feeds and things like this that aren't even any of us. So it's going to be, like you said, interesting. I think it's a good starting point, and it's something we're going to have to continue to address and stay on top of, and it's just part of the world we live in now.
Yeah, and I think that's why we want to bring it to you, and we'll be bringing it to you each time, rather than trying to, you know, fumble in the dark, making decisions about stuff that, you know, we're not consulting you first, so.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to... Thank you, ma'am. Let's move to... Third item before us this evening, the first and final reading of Resolution 6-2025. This is an allocation of the Greenville County CDBG funds and the home funds for program year 2025. Mike Sell joins us as a deputy city administrator for that discussion. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. No additional information. This is the annual resolution asking to pass the allocations that were recommended by GCRNA during the public hearing this evening. Those figures are contained in here, as they were in the slide presentation that you had. Staff meets with them annually to go over their recommendations. We provide our feedback on those, and we work out what the budget allocations for each year are going to be together. And the recommendations that are in the resolution, where your staff, in conjunction with GCRNA staff, are asking you to adopt those tonight.
Counsel, this is first and final reading of Resolution Number 6-2025. As you heard, this comes with a recommendation from staff, as well, as you heard this evening as well, too, the allocation and plan of action from CDBG. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mike, were these the only applicants for funds? The, when we get down into the, I guess, the sub-recipient funds for the city creative advancement, Greer Relief, and Greer Community Ministries, were those the only ones?
Yes, sir.
And were those the amounts that they applied for?
The...
They weren't the amounts that they applied for, they were the amounts that were awarded, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. I do not have the exact information about which each was applied for. I do know that the initial recommendations, I believe we're setting aside $60,000 for sub-recipient funding in total, and I believe that the recommendations only totaled $49,000. And we asked them to go back and take a look that if the... And they were going to take the additional $11,000 and put it in another line item. And we asked sub-respondents to be fully funded at the $60,000 level, and that the program is to be reviewed, that if they asked for more than what was originally awarded, that if the program qualified for those dollars, that those dollars would be awarded up to whatever they can. I know a couple of them did go up in the amounts that they were going to receive, but I believe that overall, I think, if I recall correctly from our discussion, I think that they're pretty much fully funded for what they asked for. There's a couple of times where some of the things that they asked in their applications just can't be paid for by HUD dollars, and so they're not included.
I just know in the past, we've had, I guess it was a breakdown or a spreadsheet of what... And then counsel has taken upon themselves to adjust those numbers. But here, it doesn't sound like that's needed.
Yeah.
At all, because everybody's being fully funded?
Yes.
Others?
Just for a point of clarity on the home funds, it's $111,760. That's not going to be enough to build a home. I mean, are they going to wait till that gets built up to a certain level to build one of the townhomes?
As Jose mentioned during the presentation, that, the good thing about this program is like a lot of our special funds, that money doesn't disappear on an annual basis like our general budget dollars do. So that fund, there's still, there's money in our funds to fund things. That's just the allocation for this particular year. So I do not know what the balances are in the home fund overall are right now, but that's just how much is going to be added to the program. And then, as they utilize those funds to do new construction, they'll be paid out through, they'll sometimes dip into a budget that's two or three years old and pull out those allocations first to fund programs, and they just kind of work through it that way. So we may spend that money that was allocated, you know, two budget cycles ago. But it's not just a total amount that'll be spent in a given year on the program. It's just that's how much program income is expected to be generated this year. And you'll notice, just as a side comment, and no question asked about, but, you know, for looking at there being no allocations on some of those items, mainly it's because the turnover for selling the units at Fairview Towns, they do not know what, how many they're going to sell this year. So rather than just making a guess and putting down, you know, we're going to generate $100,000, they want to see what the experience is. As that money comes in, it just gets put into the fund, and it could be spent and held until later. They just didn't want to make a big guess about, you know, how much they thought, because they are moving a little bit more slowly, mainly because it's a new project to be developed, and they're having to make sure they match up the folks at the right income levels that can qualify for the, for the funds in order to enter into homeownership for that, for that housing development. They believe that as those start to turn over, that program will pick up probably on the next six to 18 months, and then we'll start seeing our program income continue to go up, maybe a little bit similar to the levels that we've had in the past. That program income driven heavily in the past was on Creekside. Creekside just sold a lot of houses, brought a lot of income in for us. Before that project, when I first got here, back in, you know, 2008, 2009, our program income was about what you see in this particular budget. Creekside started coming online, the numbers creeped up real high. It just runs in cycles. So I think that over the next couple of years, you'll see that start to creep back up, giving us more dollars to invest into affordable housing projects.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sell. Mr. Grant, you're up next. Pavement preservation project, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We are continuing our pavement preservation efforts this year with two proposed projects, one with HA5 surface sealer and one with Reclamite asphalt rejuvenator. The first one in your packet, I believe, is the rejuvenator product known as Reclamite. There should be a map in your packet. The red highlighted subdivisions will be treated, and there is a street list also included in your packet. All the listed streets were accepted into the city for maintenance within the last several years. The total mileage being treated is three miles. The contractor is Pavement Technology Incorporated. They are the only licensed applicator in South Carolina and the eastern U.S. The proposed contract amount is $52,026.54 and is funded from the Road Paving Fund, and I expect a start date in midsummer. Staff requests approval to proceed with this rejuvenator application project, and I'll attempt to answer any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, the item four, pavement preservation project, Reclamite rejuvenator, entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Is there an alternative to Reclamite rejuvenator?
Probably there are other products. This one is kind of the most well-known and most used that I'm aware of.
It's just unusual that a company out of Ohio has rights to distribute this product in, what is it, four or five different states? So you have to, you have to go through them?
Yes. The manufacturer of the Reclamite actually dictates that. They only allow certain contractors because I guess their reputation, their product is online. If it's not applied correctly in the right mixture amounts, of course, it doesn't last as long, et cetera, et cetera. So they're very particular about the capabilities of the contractors to install it.
And this, again, is the process of going through and just covering up the cracks again, is that right?
No, ma'am. This product here is just right on top. We'll talk about crack sealing in just a minute.
Like tar on the whole new road or something?
No, this one actually absorbs in, and after about a week, you don't even notice that it's there.
It's a sealer for the whole road. The next agenda item is actually a crack sealer.
Okay.
But this is, this is an entire surface application.
I see.
And HA5 is the crack sealer?
Well, it's a fog seal. This is a rejuvenator. This actually absorbs into the pavement and keeps it pliable. The HA5 is a surface sealer that basically is just like a sunscreen that keeps the sun off the road.
Sorry.
But that's, yeah, that's the next item.
Do you know the age of these, some of these subdivisions? Are any of these covered under that amount of money we keep back from the developer to process some of it? Because a lot of these subdivisions don't really seem that old.
No, they're all relative new, on purpose. This product is really, you should apply it four years or less.
So with them being new, why do we have to put this on top? I mean, is it not a responsibility of, not part of the funds?
No, this extends the life. This is specific to extending the life of the road.
Right.
So as opposed to coming to council and asking council to allocate funds for resurfacing projects, this pushes that ball farther down the road, so we don't have to resurface. It's a much cheaper alternative to give us a longer life on the roads.
And it's...
So on the older roads that have all the cracks, why do we not do something with them?
We do. That's on the next, that's the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
How long have we been doing this now?
Let's see, 22. This will be the third year.
Okay. And I ask you this every time, but we are, we're keeping records to see, you know, does it look like this is where, is this preserving the pavement?
Yes.
Is it, and just first blush, so we're three years in, how many extra years should we get out of this?
This, five to seven years.
Okay, so we're...
With one application.
We're halfway through the first application, whatever street it was, we're halfway through that hopefully picked up time.
Right.
Correct? And on those streets, is it looking like that?
Well, they still look good. We won't really know for sure until it extends, you know, out to the end of their life. If you don't treat a road, you have 25 years. But this product has shown that it extended out, one application will extend it out four to seven years longer, so.
Okay, and we're looking at the lifespan of an asphalt road being 15 years?
Most of them, 25, give or take.
Okay, and so then, we, after we get through with the Reclamite, then we go on to the HA5? If the street starts doing that, starts...
We can. We haven't gotten to that point yet. We're not, that's going to be years down the road. They're two different products for two different...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is possible, yes, somewhere way down the road, when one of these Reclamite roads starts cracking and ravelling like some of the roads in the next agenda item, then we could consider HA5 at that point, yes. But that would be, that's going to be way down the road.
So we're trying to get 25 years out of the road?
Or longer, as much as possible. I mean, I've seen some that's 40.
I got that. But what's the, what's the reality of it? I mean, what?
The reality is, this product in history has shown that it extends the life of roads, but you have to, you have to time it.
Being an engineer.
Yeah, you have to watch it over, I won't be here in 30 years to tell you. You know, that's just it.
I won't either.
I'm just telling you what...
You're 60, Joe, you made it.
These products have been in use for 50 years, and the empirical data shows they extend the life.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can only treat one road one time with the Reclamite?
No, sir. Actually, they recommend you treat it three times, year one, year six, and year 11.
Awesome, okay.
That's what they recommend. We haven't gotten that far yet. We're only in year three.
And you're saying the road just effectively, it's almost like it bakes, dries out, and this is just to make it more pliable again?
Pliable. It actually absorbs into the asphalt and keeps it pliable and reduces cracking, which starts the process of deterioration.
So we're going to, three miles of that, it, what is it, $50,000, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Think about, think about this. This is sort of like painting your house, you know?
Or changing your oil.
Changing your oil. You know what? It's not like paving concrete, though.
Let's move on. Others? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. All right. Next item before us is the pavement preservation project. It includes the HA5 surface sealer. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, sir. And yes, this product is what, it's similar, but it works differently, and it's really for older roads than Reclamite. Reclamite you should use on roads that are less than four years old. This product is up to 10 years old, and it's effective. So little different product, little roads in a little worse condition. But again, this is the fog seal product known as HA5. See your map? The blue highlighted subdivisions will be treated there, and there's a street list included in your packet. These subdivisions were recently cracked sealed, and it is common to surface seal after crack sealing. I would note that Redcroft Estates, Redcroft and Estates at Diller Creek, the two bottom ones, the blue ones on your map, those are actually being cracked sealed in two to three weeks. So, but the others have already been cracked sealed. The total treatment is 4.6 miles. The contractor is Holbrook Asphalt, and they are the only licensed applicator of this product in South Carolina. The proposed contract amount is $328,721.37. It is funded by the Road Paving Fund, and I also expect a start date in mid to late summer. You may recall, I've mentioned this before, APWA recommends 10% to 25% of your road maintenance budget to be preservation-related, and these two projects put us at 19%. Staff requests approval to proceed with the HA5 surface sealer project, and I'll entertain any questions.
Comes with a recommendation from staff, to hear a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
And you said Holbrook is the only, this goes back to my other question, is this a similar situation?
It is. They actually, they actually mix this stuff locally. They bring the, I guess, the potent version from the manufacturer, and they have to mix it locally with, I guess, water. And if it's not mixed appropriately, of course, it doesn't work right, and then they get a bad reputation, and they go out of business. So they're very protective of their product.
I can appreciate that. I just think it's better business to have some competition. You know, if you had two options or three options, and I think it...
Well, there are some other fog seal products. Just from my research, this is the best of the ones that I've heard of. There are some cheaper ones, but they don't last as long. So you kind of get what you pay for.
When I say competition, I mean apples to apples. So that's fine. I mean, if it's, if it's a better product and it's going to last longer than that, you're making the right call. I just, I just, it would be nice if somebody else was on their level, so they could at least compete on pricing, because when you don't have any real competition, you can just set it where, the bar wherever you want to set it.
Right. I guess their competition is the other companies that use other products. I mean, we're free to choose any one we want. And just talking to the Spartanburg County users that's been using it for years and is convinced it's a good product, and so, and I've been to some conferences where it was discussed with others as well, and, you know, I believe it's a very good product and it's worth our money.
Okay, clarify for me, and I probably missed it. You probably said it already. What's fog seal? What does that do?
It seals the surface. It doesn't penetrate like Reclamite. It just seals, it's just a coating over the surface. It does not penetrate.
So it's not patching the cracks?
No, but all these roads are cracked sealed beforehand.
Beforehand?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there again, you know, it just seems like, I know Chestnut Hill, you know, is not all that old. Maybe, it could be maybe 10, 15 years old or something? And so you seem to see maybe some, so sometimes I wondered, like, and I know we check the roads before we accept them into the city to approve them, but somehow or other, it kind of seems like some of the newer subdivisions, roads, seem to be deteriorating faster than some of the older. And, you know, looking at the list.
Yeah.
Not riding around the entire county, but anyway, yeah.
If you, if you've got any specific examples you think of, I would...
Especially, you know, Redcroft, Redcroft is not old at all, is it?
No, it's about, well, when I got here 10 years ago, it had been recently paved, like, probably 11 years, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. I just remember taking a kid home from school with my grandson one day, but, so I can't remember. That could have been 10 years ago.
It's got some cracks, and now's the time to catch it before it really starts going off the cliff. So we're catching it at the last minute.
I just thought Redcroft was fairly new.
And from what I'm hearing from you, it's in that 10 to 15 year time window.
Yes, sir. It's right at the edge of, we're going to just skip over it and let it deteriorate or try to save it, and that's where we are.
That's when things start to go downhill potentially, and that's what we're trying to address.
The curve accelerates, you know, it looks, it kind of deteriorates, and then when it reaches a certain point, it kind of falls off. We're trying to catch it before it gets there, yes, sir.
So instead of the 15 to 20 that we might get without doing anything, we're trying to shoot for that 25 years by doing these things?
Correct.
Others?
Speaking back to what Judy said, do we, after we accept a road, do we have a warranty period?
We do. Two years.
Two years, okay. Have we ever had situations where...
No, they've, they've always been great so far.
Do we ever go back and pull the older streets? I mean, like, that are 20, 25 years old and go by that? Or is it just by choice or what?
You mean getting on this list?
Yeah.
It's by the PCI. That, that truck that comes around every four years and gets our PCI, that's where I start.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why I wonder sometimes why the older roads don't pick up like the newer roads apparently are. And when I say newer, I know we're talking about several years.
With HA5, you need a PCI, they recommend about 70 plus. So if it's a 65, I'm probably not even going to look at it. It's already past that point of no return, and we're just going to wait till it deteriorates and we repave it. So we're catching those at about the 70 point and trying to keep them above 70.
So that's to clarify, these roads that may be 20 years old, you know, maybe they do have conditions that if they're 10 years old, we would be doing this, but because they're 20, we know they're nearing the end of their cycle anyway, and we're just going to wait, put them on the paving list.
Right. It's kind of, it was kind of eye-opening to me, you, 70 and above PCI, you can treat it. it. 50 and below is kind of the range you pave. So anything between 50 and 70, you just let it be until it gets to 50.
I think it would be a good idea, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not doubting But as far as the extension of life and prolonging having to repave, that's information we've been given from others, correct? It's not, because we haven't been in this program long enough to know if it, if it's going to pay for us, pay, do what we're paying for.
Right. But preservation's been around for about 50 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what I would say, it would probably be a smart thing for us to do, not necessarily find a road that's, that would be our control, or to dedicate a road that's going to be controlled, so we know we're just going to let it go. But maybe we could find something in our inventory that maybe it's beyond, maybe it's in that between 50 and 70 PCI and just follow it versus what's been treated and that kind of thing. At least, even if it's just, yeah, we rode out there and looked at it, we know how old this is, and we know how old these are, and these are the conditions, you know.
We could do that. I mean, I know Auburn University, and they've done all this things, I mean, yeah, they've, they've run all these test controls and all this stuff. I mean, there's...
Clamtech, dude, they do anything?